Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Douglas Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September 29th, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM.
Okay.
We have no agenda items tonight. First item on discussion is McIntyre Bond, Northeast Main Street ER 000222.
Sorry, my bad.
You want to let us know what's happening?
How are you? John Thomas, McIntyre.
Tom McIntyre, also McIntyre Loom and manager of PTLC.
They own the property.
Which is the owner of the parcel.
So the reason we got called in here, I think everybody knows that we had, you know, a play from a neighbor about some activity that was going on. You know, discussions with Bill came after that. And I guess all the proper paperwork is not in place. And, you know, so we're working towards making sure that everything is in place moving forward. So I think you guys, in your packet, you have our continuation bond that was extended through October 2020. You know, we put a call into Land Surveyors for an ASBIL. It's not in current condition. Bill gave me a copy of an ASBIL that was from 2002, I think.
No, I think it was like 2004.
2004, so prior to us owning the property, which we purchased and, or did we purchase this project?
Yeah, so over 2005.
So, you know.
So is there an active earth removal operation ongoing? What happened with the complaint?
Well, we used the facility as a, you know, transfer station, if you will. Like we process, yeah, processing site. Yeah, we bring in material, you know, raw products, you know, process and we ship out. You know, and in the course of doing businesses, you know, there are some areas of the pit that, you know, we changed, I guess, the grade, you know, the way it was, the hill was not a hill or whatever. But, you know, and that was all in the, you know, we're restoring the edges, so like all the slopes on the edges were, you know, as we cut through them, we've been finding logs or trees or roots or stomps or whatever. So we're pulling those out, we're fixing them. So, I mean, things change over time and we have not had an ASBIL since that one that you showed. So, you know, we have to do that.
So has the complaint been addressed?
Well, when the complaint came in, I mean, we've known that they've carried and renewed their surety, the restoration's surety for years. The permit expired in like 2004 or whatever my letter says.
So it wasn't required to be extended?
Well, we would come, bring it up periodically. At one point, they came before the board and had an alternative topsoil material. They did one side slope with, it was the paper mill sludge from Irving.
Or Irvine.
And so that was under DEP beneficial use determination guidance. And nonetheless, they did some restoration activity, but they continually provided this surety. So when the complaint came in, and the complaint, the nature of the complaint had two, two primary things. One was they're removing earth. Now, whether or not it's in excess of the threshold in the bylaw, I don't know. And number two, it's been a while since surety, since restoration activity has occurred on the site. Okay? So at the last meeting, the board instructed me to send a letter to them outlining these things, asking for their plan of action. Certainly because the current surety expires October 1st of this year, the board needed to be in a position to take some action or have them move forward in a particular direction. So we put the letter together, sent it to them. They've been very responsive, contacted me immediately once they got the letter. And I have forwarded the surety, the replacement surety to town council. Haven't heard back from town council yet. I do know that we do need the agreement portion of the surety. I gave a sample in the packet that has to be provided. And so, once that gets resolved, I think we'll, we'll have a little breathing room, as I put it with Tom. You know, for us, it's, we have to access the surety while it's still active. If it expires, that puts us in a position where we can't restore the site. So surety, looks like we're getting there. We may have some back and forth on that. But in the bigger scheme of things, we need a schedule. We need to know what their plan is. If they, if they are removing earth, let's get a valid earth removal permit so that, you know, things are all above board. And basically, we need to know where they're at with regard to the operation as it is today, which is why I asked for an ASBIL. So, so basically, I'm looking at some point to get a formal response to my letter, not just, you know, a copy of your surety.
Absolutely.
But these items should be addressed, along with a schedule of what your plan is, whether it's we're going to restore, or we're going to go for an earth removal permit, or whatever combination there is in there.
Is this the same site that, I think, was looking to close out their permit anyways?
This is near the Bosom.
I know where it is. It was in the same location that was looking to do the earth.
Oh, the remediation.
Oh, I was thinking, okay. Because I knew one of them wanted to finish their project.
Okay, so by next meeting, you're going to get an ASBIL. You're going to have a timeline and respond to Bill's comment letter.
I can't, you know, say what any surety, you know, it's like if the ASBIL will be done or not, I mean, you know, that's up to Andrews, who we contacted. You know, we're obviously pushing for it, we'll do it. I have no idea what this gets, like, they didn't get back to me yet.
Okay.
This letter went out, this information went out FedEx, but they went to the PO box, so came back and then I think it just got, I got it Thursday.
Well, I emailed it to both of you.
I got that Thursday as well. I got it emailed the same day.
I think if you were going to do restoration, the restoration route, it's fine, but if you're, you shouldn't be doing any earth removal at this time.
So.
Just processing, that you do not have a permit.
Right.
So there should be zero earth removal until we issue a new permit.
Or you let us know what you're going to do.
Or it's under the bylaw.
Right, it's under the bylaw.
It's under 300.
Yes.
A year.
A year.
Yeah.
But I think we haven't, we haven't discussed this project since when? When was the last time they were here?
Uh, when they did the restoration on the side slopes, which was probably.
We've done restoration since then.
They haven't contacted us about that.
Yeah, I'm just looking for.
The last restoration we knew about was the paper mill sludge, and that was what, 2005, 2006, I'm guessing.
Yeah, so the timeline, there's a gap there on communication.
Yeah.
So we'll at least need the response letter and the timeline by the next meeting, which is 10-8.
And the surety seems to be, should be pretty good.
Is it the same thing?
I'd have to calculate it, but it's what they've maintained, so they've been carrying what they've maintained. I can't tell you if it's, it's probably grossly inadequate, given the years that have gone by.
That's only the same carrier.
Which is part of the reason, you know, we need to get a restoration plan.
It's only the same carrier, that they're removed.
Yeah, it's at town council for review.
Okay. So we have a date line, those two items.
Yep.
What is the date of the next meeting?
10-8.
Yes, 10-8. Yep.
So I think we're clear, unless it's 300 cubic yards, just to address that comment, I mean, the complaint. We're not taking earth off there, there's no earth removal.
No. That's why we need the ASBIL. Yep. And if it's going to be a delay on that, Andrews can say when they think they might have it done, would be great.
Yeah, I'll give Steve a call tomorrow.
Steve's not there.
He's not there, you know? That's probably one of the problems.
Yeah, don't try to call him.
Call Byron.
I'm not surprised you haven't heard back.
Or an email.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Oh.
Very, very quickly, please. Name and address, please.
Jeremy Flasberg, 63 Monroe. I walked in real quick. What is the addresses project?
Northeast Main Street, it's.
Next to Bosom, 470.
470, you know.
I just didn't know where the address is.
Ultimately, of course.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Yeah, have a good night.
And I think we should probably get an updated list on active or open earth removal sites that are not restored yet.
Yep, and Mary can put that as a reminder for me.
Second item on discussion. N O Q W Whitehead Reservoir states removal of rubble, release of the covenant for lots number two and number three. Modification 120906.
Come on over.
Hello, Jennifer Gavels, Frank Q O W. Bob Hayes is also here. So there's been some correspondence with Bill. I'm sorry I didn't respond to your email this afternoon, I was out of the office for the remainder of the day. I think Bob sent over something, I don't know if you all have it, it was late this afternoon, just with regards to what has been done on site as far as the removal. Billy, I know you were participating in most of it. I hadn't heard back, so I don't know if there's anything additional, but the last thing that was done was, the ABC was sorted through by hand. There were significant amount of loads that were moved to pine sand and gravel. You have, should have all of the slips there. And there were some that were submitted last, last month, the 10th. And then there's, I think, 16 slips for last week. I think everything occurred on the 16th, it was the Monday after our meeting was the removal.
We don't have any of the slips.
Well, there's, I don't.
So it's dumping page?
Yes.
Dumping page? Yes, it doesn't say what exactly.
So there was inspection at the site and everything's been cleared?
Well, I haven't been out in a few days. I had an issue that I couldn't make it out there, which is why some of the emails that I've gotten haven't been responded to. But nonetheless, I think at the last meeting, we were pretty clear about asking for a detailed summary and update as we move forward. And more of a formal type thing, where we get a daily log and spreadsheet showing the activity of removal, backed up by the waste slips and the documentation substantiating that. I'm continually requesting this. And I recognize that emails had come in, but they're not to the level that I think I'm at least accustomed to. And certainly if the DEP were involved, it would be an elevated level of reporting that we would have seen. So what I'm going to ask through the board, if they agree, is to have their engineer prepare a detailed report as to the activity that's occurred in a manner that's clear and concise. We still have to provide that information to the DEP.
Yep.
And because they're still monitoring and they're still involved, and they're not copied on these emails. So in spite of any other issues on the site, I think that's a significant component that I think is lacking. And I appreciate the effort that Bob puts in, but the detail's just lacking with regard to that.
Is this the, basically, the log of activities, Robert Ford?
This is what was provided today, yesterday, the meeting at my request.
So the first, we started on the 16th, the removal started on the 16th. So immediately following our meeting on the 10th, I had sent off an email just to, this is the, this is the plan of action, we're going to have people together on the Monday was the decision. I believe you were out there on Monday. The only thing that's happened as far as that is the removal. So the slips came in and you have those. What, what further detail?
There was activity prior to the 10th. Oh, because I think there was a total of 12 loads, we estimated, 10 to 12 loads? So the activity prior to the 10th, I mean, I think you're starting point.
Les is right. We need a comprehensive review of what's occurred at the site on a daily basis. Communicating through emails that there's no activity on site is good for me to have, but I don't know it's essential for this reporting.
So the level of involvement was not clearly conveyed at the last meeting? So I'll take honor, you know, that's on me for not, but if you wanted more, I wish that you had said something prior to sitting here tonight.
I've said it at the meeting, no, I've said it at the meeting and I've had conversations with Bob about that. And again, I've used the term spreadsheets, daily breakdown, tonnages, backed up with the waste slips, which has not been provided. Nonetheless, and that's an important aspect of this, because we do have an idea of the volume that was brought to the site. Okay? So we need to compare that to what they've removed from the site, and it has to be.
So is there regulatory requirements, say DEP was running this removal, they have a specific reporting requirement for cleanup that they can use as a guide? Because you said, you know, we've taken over this responsibility the town has, instead of leaving it in DEP's hands, which would continue on for a long time. What is their requirement for communication and specifically just for this issue?
It's not complicated. It's not a complicated thing, Tracy. And I, you know, I would say each project is independent, you can't really give an example.
So DEP doesn't have a requirement on this type of cleanup for daily reporting?
Well, they would. They would have to, they're the ones that are requesting documentation. They want the waste slips. They want the summary reports.
Right.
Okay? I'm not the one that's going to be generating that. That should be coming from them.
Yeah, is it falling under one of their regulations, so that I can point to that regulation for them to meet that requirement?
It's, it's basically, they chose to not take enforcement and let it, let it lie with the town. Had they taken enforcement, it would have been three, four months before they got a resolution.
I'm just looking for the communication to clarify for them, because I don't think that's clear. They're saying, it was, I have the minutes that say that schedule and a plan of activity. So that hasn't been provided?
That was provided.
Okay. And then.
Just very simply stated.
If there will be activity on the site, he needs a written request or summary stating what will be occurring, so that he'll know if he needs to go out to the site before it's happening.
Yes.
And during business hours. I think we, we had stated that. That was the conversation, that was the extent of the conversation.
And as far as.
We also discuss spreadsheets and waste slips.
Unfortunately, I don't recall either, but we can get that for you.
That, I don't want that to be an end all be all today.
Yeah.
That is, you know, my recollection as well. But if you, as far, and every time we've been out there, there has been an email, there has been dialogue as to what's being done, and beyond that, there hasn't been.
Yeah.
So as far as spreadsheets, I mean, there's now the type of the slips, I can, you know, put that together in a, in a nice spreadsheet form as to what's been removed and make it clean, but beyond that, is there anything that's missing?
I think if you hauled out 12, right, or you hauled out six before we had a meeting on the 10th, you got to show those six slips prior.
Yeah, right.
As well as the six that you've done. So, you know, you've done the whole site, and then we just basically just.
It's just accounting, that's all it is.
Just pull it all together and then report.
Again, I'm going to reiterate, I am requesting through the board that their engineer prepares a summary report that's detailed on a daily activity basis for what's been done from the start of the deposition of the material to date. And certify that it's all been removed.
What engineer?
The engineer hasn't been.
Nobody's been involved in that.
So that's the issue now, because nobody's going to certify that it's all been removed if they haven't been involved from the beginning. And that's probably what DEP would do, they would have somebody, you know, on the site.
A monitor.
And, yeah, enforcing the removal.
Basically, we're requesting to move certain piles.
Name and address, please.
I remember values, we did it. We did exactly what you.
Name and address, please.
Lori, sorry.
That's okay, they don't know your voice.
Yep. Anyway, so we removed what we were requested to move, there was never a request for an engineer. And we had Bill or someone there taking pictures, DEP was there, they went over it. So we removed what we requested and nothing further was required. So it's not fair to ask after the fact to bring in an engineer, which is a geotech to do what?
I don't think it's practical.
The reason I'm asking through the board that an engineer be involved is because of the level of documentation that we've been provided to date. From my perspective, it's not adequate to present to the DEP. I've asked for these spreadsheets summarizing on a daily basis the tonnage that's been removed, that's not been provided. We've gotten the waste slips, but I've had to tally them up myself. They need someone on their end to provide that. And again, it has to be done in a professional, logical manner. Usually it's done with a letter format, a letter report with charts and tables with the backup documentation appended to it.
So was there a conversation before today at 11:13, please provide a detailed breakdown using a spreadsheet?
Yes, yes.
Do you know, was that just communicated to Bob?
It's been communicated to Bob repeatedly and probably Lori out in the field.
No.
I'm not going to get into an argument.
I can only go by what is written.
The board can require it or they cannot require it? I guess that's what, where we're at.
I mean, I think it's hard to require it if an engineer hasn't been involved from the start.
To summarize the data?
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody.
The activity on the site?
So.
No, that happens regularly, Tracy.
No geotech is going to come in after the fact and sign up on anything, because he wasn't involved to start.
Can I just add something, Tracy?
Yes, sorry. Name and address, please.
Do you want a geotech type engineer? What kind of?
I want the, the project engineer for the subdivision.
The project engineer for the site.
That knows the site, that designed the site.
Yeah.
Familiar with the site.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, Andrews worked with me and we quantified some of these piles of rubble that were at the site when we were doing the surety calculations.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Robert Payson, I'm, I'm one of the owners at National New Hampshire. I, I, okay, again, I don't want to just dispute everything, anything, but, you know, I've got pages of emails, okay, that, that I've been sending, okay? And, and every one of these notations here has an email that substantiates what was going on. On Wednesday, okay, I emailed to say, I understand you had a meeting with Lori, okay? I get down there at 11:30 and nobody was there. And, okay, I called Lori, she had sent me an email, okay, to say that Lori and Bill had talked and decided they were going to do this on, on Monday, and I don't know the date here. And we, so I immediately sent that email to Bill and asked, okay, you know, okay, I understand that this is the, the arrangement now, okay, can, you know? And on Friday, I hadn't heard anything, okay? Then I followed up, okay, we followed up on Monday at 8:30 because no one was there. Okay, well, another email, okay, and to Bill's defense, okay, he was out that day, okay? You know, and these emails have a chronological order to them. It's not like we haven't been communicating.
But I think he's looking for it in a compiled data form.
No, I, no.
So as a long story, this is, we dumped it on this day, this is what happened, then three days later, we removed it, we trucked this many, here's the backup data. Not a million emails that you can't follow.
But by the same token.
What he requested.
But by the same token, he just asked, okay, want to know date, daily activity, and I'm trying to do that.
Right. So on a day-to-day basis, that's fine, and if he needs to be out there to, to inspect the site. But we need it compiled, this whole episode of the ABC needs to be compiled into one letter like this. We need one point person that is going to get this together with a spreadsheet of the totals and all of the backup in a nice little bow and send it off to DEP so that all the regular.
Maybe you're, well, for it to the DEP.
Well, you're saying to CC, the DEP.
Well, you could.
Also copy the DEP on your information. So who will be the point person?
Hi, Mom.
Was that, that way there, it's a list of activities and where.
And if your engineer is, has been involved in certain aspects.
Didn't know how much was there.
They, huh?
He hasn't been with them.
You said that he was out when it first was done.
Yes, there was.
For the roadway, like three meetings ago.
Yeah, so he did something for the roadway.
Yes.
And he's got a plan for where the roadway was when he went out there and snapshot it up?
Yep.
So that's your, that's your start point?
Was it dumped at that moment? He didn't see the ABC out there.
He saw it out there, yes, there were piles of.
Okay, so we're going to start there with the engineer on site.
That were used when we did the surety calculations.
Okay.
It was in the cul-de-sac at that time.
Is this in the August timeframe, Phil?
So about a year ago.
Oh, it's about a year ago? So, okay.
I thought it was just dirt.
Okay, so I thought this, this came in the summer.
It did.
So they did, they did, when they were out there, they did an ASBIL for the road and the site?
Well, we had an ASBIL, but that predated the stockpiles. I took the ASBIL, went out, did an inspection, and came up with my surety calculations, and I carry, you'll see to my calculations, a volume estimate for the stockpile material in the cul-de-sac. I think I carry 25 bucks a yard to remove.
So is it a possibility that the, their engineer can certify that the material, the before and the after?
Well, I think the burden falls on them, frankly. It shouldn't fall on the town. They should demonstrate and have someone qualify that all the material's been removed. I mean, I think that's common practice.
Well, is that a possibility if their engineer was on site and they took the, the takeoffs for the grading and now it's different grading? I don't know how their engineer would be able to certify all the activities, the before. So we started with a plan and now there's, there's new grades out there.
We have the documentation, what they're claiming they removed, okay? We have an idea of what they brought in. So I'm going to compare those two things. I need them to provide that.
Like a working ASBIL plan?
I don't need a plan.
Okay.
I, I need data and documentation presented in a clear format. I need the activity documented, when they did it, what happened. And, you know, this is not adequate.
Okay.
All I'd like to know.
Name and address, please.
All I would like to know is, okay.
Name and address, please.
Again?
Name, yeah, they don't know who's talking.
Every time you talk, I didn't.
Yeah, that's okay.
Robert Payson, National New Hampshire, calling. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
What you're saying is, and this is all I want to make sure, because I don't want the, I don't want the goal line keep moving, okay? I want to get this thing resolved, as I said, every time I come down here, I, I've done everything, including sweep the street, okay? And, you know, okay, I sent handpickers in there, okay, to pick up, so there's a little pile right here that they picked, okay, with pieces like that. I, I've tried to comply the best I know how to do. I, I, you know, just to state my own case, I have been emailing, okay, just to try to keep everybody in the loop, okay? And if there was a problem, I would assume I would get an email back. That's, that's, that's my issue.
At this moment, are we very clear on what we're requesting? And it's pretty much for the record to submit to DEP to meet all of their requirements for this cleanup.
At what point does the town certify that it's been done appropriately? What is it?
With everything removed.
And I think we would look to DEP to weigh in on it as well.
I would probably do a final site walk with the DEP.
Yeah.
Yes.
And probably some members of the board.
I wouldn't let you know.
So I can get you that compilation of everything that's happened in totality and then request a site visit with everybody to.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Yeah, something in this format from the beginning with a spreadsheet with all the copies.
Just supporting data, that's all.
Yep, and then through Bill.
No, the only thing I want to add is, you know, we did see the. No, the only thing I want to add is, you know, we did see the, quite a bit of excavation on the western, southwestern edge of the cul-de-sac. We however, have not tested the northern end of the cul-de-sac and so I probably want to see a couple of test pits over on that.
So two?
At the site visit or an advance.
Either way, doesn't matter to me.
Let's decide now.
Prior to.
Yes, I would say prior to, so that we're not at the final site visit and something else is on the other side.
There should be no...
You're in the northern, so when you go into the...
It's at the end of the cul-de-sac.
It's at the end, straight ahead.
A little bit to the left, so northwestern.
Just so we're clear.
Yep.
How about we do it Saturday?
Northwest?
Saturday, did you say?
I don't know when you do sightwalks.
Oh, a sightwalk? It's probably going to be during the week.
How about tomorrow?
Yeah, we really, most of us were.
No, I do too, I mean...
Yeah, well, Bill's not going to be available on Saturday, most likely.
Okay, all I'm trying to do is get this thing, okay, to a finale.
Well, we're trying to for our final site walk? You think that you're ready?
Yeah.
For, you're completed?
Yeah.
It's completely done?
Yeah.
But you don't have your test pits yet? We just talked about...
Your test pits, okay, but, right.
So you're going to dig these two pits and you're still going to get the report together? You have it ready by Friday? And then I think we're done, we're at that point.
I mean, you should ask Lori because she's doing it.
And we could, the board could go at their leisure too. It's a drive-by, we don't have to have a plan or anything. We're going to have to just look, visually look and see.
So I'll send you off the summary. I will let you know when the test pits are available. I don't think, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves on planning tonight.
I'll be there when the test pits occur and I'll select the locations.
So yeah, so it'll have to be scheduled with Bill.
I'll take the rain.
During the week.
During the week, does that work?
During the week.
Yeah, during the week.
Does that cover everything that we need for information for the DEP?
Yes.
To take care of this issue?
Unless something from the DEP comes in, but I can't control that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the process, so I would have to read the regulations.
Everybody's hands up.
If you do a final walkthrough Friday, I might be able to be there.
Yeah, Friday, I might be available Friday.
I'll get you the report as soon as possible.
Friday morning.
Yeah.
Okay, we're starting when it happened.
Can I know that as well?
They quantified the amounts on site, I think, when Andrews was it?
I'm available Friday morning.
Andrews didn't quantify.
It was the engineer.
The report is from September of 2018 and I don't see... This is the engineering, the bond estimate from last September.
What did you say, 10 o'clock? Okay, does that work?
I have to work out my sheet, I'm not sure what this is.
Can I just ask one more question? Who, Bill, who did you meet out on site when it was dumped? The stuff was dumped, the ABC?
Andrews.
Which engineering firm did you meet at?
It was Andrews and it was Steve O'Connell I worked with on this.
Who's no longer there.
Okay, so we're starting from there, that day.
What day? The day from, that you went out and site visited to get the bond estimate or the DEP?
I emailed, I can reset, an email that I sent to Steve way back when that has the volume calculation for the material back then.
Okay. And that was the stuff in the...
And that was the first pile. Then since then, we had rubble come in from Worcester, which we have a good idea as to what that was quantity.
There was already one pile before?
Yes, it was in the cul-de-sac.
You going all the way back to 2005 or 2008?
No, it's a year ago.
Just a year ago, yeah, last year, last fall.
Even though Steve's not available with that firm.
I have the email.
No, 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 but the plan that he did.
Yeah, we all have that.
Didn't show it.
And the other portion of this was the covenant. So what do we want to do with that?
Before we get into that discussion, I did ask Jan at the last meeting to provide a detailed list of the items that are required, which I've not gotten yet.
Right, because nothing has changed since then. There was, there's the, we have to file an application.
Right, so I wanted to have written description of each of the conditions and where you were at.
Right, it hasn't been met because they will not accept an application until the project is started. And it hasn't started, which was the problem we were in for the release originally.
The project hasn't started.
Yeah, but that's not the only condition, there's a number of conditions, including the $5,000 donations and, you know, there's a number of things and I wanted you to provide a summary for the board.
What's the status?
Where those milestones are.
The requirements of the decision.
Right.
Isn't that right in the decision though?
Of course it is.
We want to, I think we're looking for where we're at on all those items.
Yeah, just the status.
Not done, not done, not done.
No, when it's going to happen, if you're deviating from a requirement, which I think there's a few instances they are, point those out so the board knows what's going on.
The only deviation is the release of the covenant for the first two lots prior to the application to the housing.
Which we've already done a meeting on.
But they won't accept our application.
So the purpose of getting this in advance of the meeting was I would review it, I would check the decision, see if things were missed so that everybody was on the same page and that's the purpose of having that.
Like a monthly summary.
Not even monthly, this is a milestone. And the decision's clear in a number of instances that they shall not get law releases.
Until...
Until this has happened.
Happens, yep.
It says regarding a point-by-point detail for the conditions of the plan, you've stated, John stated that nothing's changed. The board was in agreement that the applicant should start to consider the monetary contribution for the building permits. The applicant should be ready to discuss this at the next meeting.
And the money is available, so will we...
It's just a milestone update.
So we can't talk about release of anything until you get a written update?
No, I didn't say that. I mean, the board can certainly sign off on something pending review of this information. I just want the board to realize.
Yeah, we haven't received anything yet.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Do you understand the request for the information?
Yes.
And then where you're deviating, what's not been done? What's moving forward? On the conditions of the decision.
So what are we looking for? A release of lots pending?
There, go ahead.
So we have a release for lots one and two, we're looking to...
You have a right to change.
Yep, so we're looking to rescind that release and apply for a new release for lots two and three.
That would allow us to apply for our building permits and give you $5,000 for each lot as well.
And I would suggest that that would be pending review of the decision and the letter that comes in from Jan.
The letter of the decision conditions?
Milestones.
The milestone letter? We've already, yeah, we've already released the two, so they're not...
So there's already two out there, we're just changing what we have. Well, then I'll go ahead and we'll make a, I'll make a motion to rescind the release of the lots one and two and to change it to lots two and three pending the review of the milestone letter as long as that is approved through Bill for Whiten's Reservoir Estates.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want a copy of the release that was?
Let me see what we've done here.
Is that the new one?
This is the one that was approved in August and it just...
Oh, by town council.
There was also a bond.
The surety is in place.
Yep, the agreement is in place, but it's in place with the release of lots one and two. So we would also request that the town rescind the agreement that has executed in May, I believe, May or April and substitute it so that it includes lots two and three that will ultimately be released.
One will hold up and sign it and come in and sign, I'll sign it.
No, I could sign it.
Senator Knight, Bill's going to hold it.
Yep.
You can hold it, Bill, right?
So do you want to make a motion to the fact that we rescind the bonding for, the bonding for one and two?
To rescind the bonding?
There's an agreement that was signed, executed.
That only say one and two?
The prior one did.
No, the surety agreement.
The exchange was just for the release.
Yes.
So what do we want to do? We send the bond?
It just says one and two, it just says one and two for that bond.
Why wouldn't it be all lots?
Came from Jay.
So is this signed?
No, this one is the new one. The town has the original.
So you'll swap out? We don't have that one. We have one and two, yeah, so we need that one replaced with the other one.
What's the OMG?
So we need to rescind the bond on one and two and accept the bond, no?
No, I think as part of your motion, you should say swap that, the lot releases along with the surety also. But I don't understand why it's not the whole subdivision, do you know why?
No.
We don't do that by a lot, by a lot basis usually.
Yeah.
So can we get a clarification on that?
Before they, before they substitute, sure.
And we can come in and...
Yeah, before we go that far, make sure we got it right, yeah, we got it all.
I think we can come inside that.
It's always for the whole project, isn't it?
That's what the surety bond is for, the whole roadway.
Something doesn't seem...
That's why I'm asking.
Oh, the surety is just for the construction of the roadway.
The surety's for the roadway, but the lot releases typically, the surety's not tied to a specific lot. It's usually the whole project.
Okay, I'll find out to include that in the name also.
So we'll hold off on that one.
The releases are based on lots.
All right, thank you.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Good night.
There's a couple people here. Do we want to put off three and five and six and, okay. All right, so...
Actually, some of those people are in the residential in the lakeside. Residential thing.
Oh, okay. Are you, Les, are you quite quick on that?
Yeah, so hopefully you guys got a color copy. So number three is Lakeside Residential. So I did get, sent Bill with central mass planning. They were supposed to be here tonight, but I don't know. They might not coming here tonight, but...
What are you looking at?
Yep, that's just the new map, updated map area. That Mike asked me to include the whole, like, lake bodies.
So that we can see what.
Yep, so I just, and I documented each street. So Bill, I got your note about putting it into a spreadsheet for just the parcel ID numbers all the way? So that can be easily done. But basically, going back and forth with the feedback from this board and, you know, Jake's feedback, this was all the parcels that we went through. So I didn't complete all the parcels, I noticed that afterwards. All the listings for Walleye, I'd be there forever, but I'm going to put that there, so. That's just a starting point and I think, you know, we often talk about the use table and updating the use table with a new column. So Lakeside, I've kept everything, I don't know, Maria might have cut it off, I might have to move the table over, but a lot of them were no's. The yeses were really just the, the single-family dwellings was B1, okay? Single-family dwellings.
So one...
This is all owned by like one person and stuff like that and all this.
It's a campground.
Yeah, no, that's...
No, 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 this house is up there.
There's a house there in a camp.
Just the one?
One house at a camp and he owns everybody else, so. Yeah, and I didn't want to mark that because then it's, you know, they can come back in the future. So basically on the use table, again, this thing's kind of outdated because it's out of order as well, so alphabetical. So I thought they would have gone from like small to large. So Lakeside Residential, a minimum would be the 5,000 square foot lot, 50 feet of frontage, 20 feet on the front setback, 10 feet on the side and 20 on the rear. And then 35 feet on the height and two and a half stories on the vertical, which is in align with all the areas in single-family.
What's our town though for height?
It's all two and a half.
I thought it was 32 feet was max.
Yeah, but it's two and a half stories is what they wrote.
It's always 35 except for Long's Lake is 36.
So this lakeside zone is what's chopped off here?
Yeah. Currently, B1 and B3 is a yes.
I did find out that the Walleye Terrace frontage and side setbacks over the original, what's in their deeds is a little different than the rare setback, side setback. Side setback was eight feet.
Where's this lot?
Walleye Terrace. So that was the original when they did those lots up there?
And what's the back?
Back was 15 feet.
So with regard to the side yard setback, I did have a conversation with the fire chief and I believe, yeah, I believe there are fire code requirements for, you know, having a distance between dwellings. Otherwise, that face of the building has to be fire rated and...
It's 10 feet, so it's five and five.
No, no.
I'm not so sure about that because we've talked about the project there up on North Village and I thought it was more than that.
Oh, I think, Bill, I think 10 feet, because, you know, go in front of the ZBA with all the applicants that they had in, from the lake, from Walleye, they didn't want to do anything less than 10 feet.
Okay, why don't we just ask for some clarification from the fire chief on that?
Yeah, yeah. The only one I got in question is just the rear, if that should be less than the 20.
You want to make it to 15?
Yeah, I'm just, I think it was 15 back in the day with, when they created that. So the problem I don't want to do is trigger, if it was 15 back in the day when they built those camps, you don't want to then trigger the problem we're trying to solve. All right, so 15 on the rear?
If that's what?
It was, back in the day.
Yeah, I got no problem with that. Because if that is, I'd like to see documentation on more than one spot. I'd love to see...
It's every single deed.
Is it, they're all 15?
It was created before zoning.
Right, it's all, they're all 15 though?
Yeah. That was the person that created the subdivision, made his own zoning.
And he made it 15 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I think we're for that, all right, no, that's great.
Remember the audience's name and address?
Brian Lebeck Kearney wrote. So to clarify on that, the original subdivision was done in 56, 57, prior to any town zoning.
That's correct.
So yes, Les is right, I believe it was eight feet on the sides. Actually, I think it was eight feet on the sides and the rear and 25 in the front was what the original was. I do have it somewhere, if you give me a minute, I'll find it and tell you, but...
You've got a, he's got it on his phone, indeed.
I do have a question on, so this proposed regulation that's on existing, or is that also going to be for new construction?
It's for reconstruction.
Reconstruction of existing. So are we going to do anything to assist the people that have maybe can put together three or four parcels at the same time as we're doing this where for new construction, they can also conform as opposed to where we're at now?
No, if you become like an RA, we had talked about that, right? If the lot becomes the size of, say, say, an RA zone or whatever, then you need to conform to those sides.
If it's RA, anything up there is ever going to be RA.
If you buy, if you, well, the thing is, and that's what we're... If you buy, if you, well, the thing is, and that's what we're hindering on is, you combine three, four lots.
Just do a Title V.
Yeah.
No matter what you do, you're gonna be Title V.
So, just to take from somebody who lives there, so while we're doing this, because it's gonna be very difficult to do it again.
Right.
If you're recreating an overlay or whatever you're calling this rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like you need to address the potential for future homeowners as well that can put together multiple lots, whether it's three or four. So, by Title V law, you need 100 feet in between a well and a septic. Those lots are 50 feet wide, so you need minimum, bare minimum, three lots to even get a well and a septic if it even, you can even manage it with your neighbor's wells.
Yeah.
So, I would like to see from the planning board to alleviate some of the issues for the residents up there as well in the future to consider putting together maybe some new regulation for existing grandfathering, but also reducing those setbacks, maybe to those same setbacks. You still have to meet Title V requirements for new construction.
You have to look at it.
Well, the table has been changed to 5,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And 50 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
If, or it's contingent on Board Health approval.
Right. I just want to bring it up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we know people that are buying multiple lots to do stuff. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think at the end of the day is, is that when you've got so many areas that are non-conforming, right, around these bodies of water. We're just trying to create a better opportunity for them to be able to enhance their property in some way and, and go from there. So...
I agree with that wholeheartedly. There's a lot of cottages down there that are just abandoned, and if you loosen the setback requirements, you can then maybe get some people in to buy those cottages, fix them up, put nice house, which is gonna generate tax revenue for the town. So, I, I think it's a great thing.
Yeah.
I just would like to see it also address, in the new construction, listen, nobody's ever getting an RA conforming lot up there. It's not happening. So, if we could consider that, I'd like you guys to take it into consideration if there's some way to make it more feasible for people. Because there are sections where you can get three or four lots.
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah, I think, I think that's with any zoning change that, that goes in or even zoning, even if there's no zoning change. So, at the end of the day is, if this goes before the people and the people approve it at the town meeting and stuff like that, then you, you fit into a category where it does create the, the possibility of doing that. But it wouldn't, you, you then become, become a conforming lot, you still have to meet these other requirements, which is through the Board of Health. Won't be through this board. So, you have to still meet those requirements of the separation.
But I, I know what you're saying. Now, somebody buys up three lots type deal, what kind of setbacks will they be required to have compared to some of that fill on?
This is a new zone. This is Lakeside, Lakeside Residential Zone.
But you're saying it's for reconstruction, not new construction.
Somebody wants to buy three lots, tear down all the houses and build new.
I don't think we can talk about new construction in an area where it's, you don't have the ability to meet the Title V on a 5,000 square foot lot by itself.
No, no. I, I know what you're saying. Somebody can come in with some bucks and buy three lots side by side, buy them up, rip everything down, now they got one big lot.
Not even rip anything down. Let's say it was woods. Can you attach those three or four together, clear it, and then still have those same setback requirements you're talking about?
One setbacks we're gonna have to...
No, 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 no.
Because it's zoned. We're changing the zone.
Correct. And, and, and all you have to do is meet the minimum, but you still have to then meet Title V. So, if you had a 15,000 square foot lot, you still have to meet Title V requirements.
Right.
Period. So, even if a person who's got a 5,000 square foot lot by itself.
Yeah.
They're not gonna meet Title V requirements.
Right.
So, they're a vacant lot forever. Period.
Unless they buy up one.
Unless they bought a cottage, an existing cottage.
Right.
And was able to do that. And there's a lot of steps that they'll have to do to maintain a cottage up there.
But are you worried about somebody coming in and buying up, say, three or four lots, and they meet all the Title V, then they put this big monstrous house because it can only, they're gonna be 15 feet from behind, and that doesn't matter? Okay.
It's improvement to the area.
I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood. All right, now you have vacant land, some of the land has trash and junk on it, you know?
And I think you should go with what was originally planned, the eight feet.
Eight feet was on the side and rear. I just read it again.
Oh.
On the rear?
Yeah.
So, you are correct.
Side and rear.
Sorry, you are correct on that.
I think I pulled, when I, when I pulled these numbers here, from my experience of Lakeside, you know, Lakeside Residential was from Webster. Um, and those were the setbacks that they used. Again, I'll have to check if it was 15, but, um, so Walmlake at the time had um, eight feet on the side and eight on the, on the rear.
25 on the front.
Yeah, 25 on the front. But, so my, my concern, again, from coming before the ZBA regarding other applicants who've come before them, they were not a fan of any variances that were less than 10 feet, even for the existing ones there. So, I think side setback at a minimum, I'd have a hard problem beyond the eight.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I mean, eight feet, you can't even get an X Invader on your house, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with 10 myself, just if you're taking input from a resident who lived there and has been through all this.
Yep.
So, 10 and 10?
10 and 10.
Or 10 and 15?
That's up to you guys.
So, the reason they got all these problems is because of the guy that drafted those deeds.
Right.
You know? So, you know, you gotta keep that in mind too. Um, the other thing that the board should consider, I mean, we're focusing on Walmlake Terrace right now.
There's a lot of these other places.
Hold on. There's other places too. So, if you're focusing in on that one worst-case scenario, and then you've got all these other spots in town that are gonna have that same criteria.
Right.
You know, that's a little inconsistent.
Well, I, I think whatever, I mean, right now, you've got these other smaller parcels and stuff like that that are non-conforming, right, in, in, in this area. So, if you're able to put them in to a zoning category, a zoning group, and even if you put them all in there, and if you get 97% of them become conforming, you know, that's better than some of the areas in town. Right now, they're, they're an RA, and, and they're all non-conforming straight through. So, you know, we're, we're better off putting them in something to give them the, the, kinda, give their homeowners a little bit of a, um, a, a break in, in being able to create an opportunity there.
So, here's what happens up there is people either just do things without a permit because they know they can't get a permit because the zoning is so ridiculous, or they just don't improve their house at all because they say, "I'm never gonna be able to get away with this."
Yeah.
So, what would the town like to do? If we loosen the setback requirements? I mean, it's crazy that we're RA with 5,000 square foot lots.
I know. Yeah, no, we know that.
So, I think we're all on the same page in that respect.
I mean, as you can see on these maps, you're not the only ones involved. I mean, it's all of them. I mean, they're all these camps.
They exclude that much as they could on the rear areas.
Yeah, back then. When they did the original zoning, they never took that into account, all these small lots that were all over the place.
So, what did we, excuse me, just to clarify, did we set backs on the sheet here at 20 feet, and it was suggested they maybe should be 15?
Uh, no. The front, the front is 20. Um, the side is 10.
I have no, I think 10, I have no problem with 10 on the side.
10 on the side. And then the only question is...
Forget the eight.
No.
You were talking about. Okay, 10 is fine.
Eight was just historical.
We can always go get a variance.
Yep.
It's easy to get.
But that's bringing you back to the problem.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah.
To go and get a variance is what we're trying to...
My question is, I heard here that we were recommended changing the rear setbacks.
Yeah, that's the one that I think is...
The 20.
You wanna go to...
Right now, they're 20, right?
Yeah.
Being proposed is 20.
Yeah.
So, what do you think of, do you guys want to go to 10?
No, I'm, I'm not familiar with the area out there. But how many houses do you think are really set eight feet from their back line or sideline?
So, I could tell you for sure that right now, the current regulation's 25, right? So, my house is 25.
Off the front.
Off, oh, I'm talking rear setback. That's what we're talking about.
I'm talking rear inside.
My house is 25, right?
Rear inside.
So, if I want to do anything, if you make it a 20-foot setback in the rear, you, I'm still back in the same boat.
Right.
Because I'm still going to the ZBA because nothing I'm gonna do is within five feet.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, you're really not rectifying the issue on the rear lot line with a 20-foot setback, in my opinion.
No, it's fair.
So, if we go with 10?
10?
I think the originals were eight and an eight. If you're going 10 and 10 to keep everybody happy and consistent with the existing ZBA decisions, and you're keeping enough room for equipment and fire trucks, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, to me, but I'm not the board.
Okay.
Um, I feel like that's reasonable.
All right. 10?
Right, so...
That's the rear.
It's the rear and the side.
Rear and side.
What about the front?
Front stays at 20.
Right. All right.
So, I pretty much allow a 30 by 70 house.
On a 10,000 square foot lot.
On a 5,000.
Well, no, well.
No septic.
If it's existing.
Yeah.
You still need the distances for Title V.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. That's max envelope, I'm saying.
Max envelope.
Yeah.
You, you still have to, yeah, have your separation from your well and everything, which will...
Right. Which will dictate the size of the house.
Here's one other question.
Whether you put a shed back there or do something like that, if you wanted to.
Yep.
If somebody did buy three or four consecutive from different owners, and then they combined them, does that eliminate the zoning, like, by combining the lots? Does it now make you...
You're still gonna meet the same setback with your septic. You gotta meet your septic guidelines.
You're still fine.
That'll be, that...
This will be an actual zone change. So, the land will have to conform with the zone that we've introduced, which is Lakeside Residential. So, whatever that is requiring is what you'd have to meet for a buildable lot.
Yeah.
But if it's in excess of that, it doesn't matter. That's fine.
Yeah, but what's gonna, what's gonna, what's gonna trigger, what's gonna trigger it is, on your building permit, is the fact that you gotta show a septic and a well working on that. The way Webster gets away with it on a small lot, on a 5,000 square foot lot.
It's a sewer.
Is because it's town water and sewer in the street, and so a 5,000 square foot lot works. Because they ran water and sewer around the whole Webster Lake into Connecticut in 91 through 93. And that's when they were allowed to keep those lots there. Now, some of those lots, similar to these camp lots, were created in 1925, and they were all 5,000 square foot lots back then. So, the difference is, is you'll still have to show in front of, you know, if someone wants to group a bunch of lots together, which is, could happen, you know, today, you gotta group all the lots together and stuff like that. So, even today, if someone grabs three, four lots, they still have to show a separation to meet Title V requirements.
Yeah. And that will, that will determine how big the house can be.
Correct.
If they say your leach field needs to be so big, well, you just lock so much of your lots.
Yeah.
Might need a whole lot just for that.
Correct.
You don't know.
Yep.
And so, the house, you know, even though the setbacks are 10, 10 and 20, you might not be able to do it because of where the well is and where the leach field is.
So, there'll be another opportunity, but if you can take it back with you and have it on our agenda, and we're open to ideas.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're planning for springtime on this article.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna make some more revisions, I'm sure.
Yep.
So, you're gonna go 20, 10, 10?
Yeah, just feedback from the board. I mean, I'm just looking at what...
And then, and questions, maybe we can get some clarification on those questions that you have so that we can ensure that what we're trying to accomplish actually happens.
Yeah, exactly. I just want to know of what we're in for in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's what the people want. It's what the town wants, and we want people to participate and give their opinion.
So, what do you propose? Do you guys think you'll be re-talking about this again?
Next meeting.
Yeah, we'll probably have it next meeting.
Till it's on the war.
The, uh, and there again, like, hopefully it'll alleviate, let's say you do want to put the shed up, put in the pool, or do whatever, and now you can do it without having to come in and go through all the hassle, like you do now, you know what I mean? It makes a big difference. And, or say you wanna put on a sunroom or whatever, you, you could be able to, and you're not gonna trigger any extra, extra, extra work to go through, you know?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, awesome. We'll see you soon. Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Number four, request for one-year earth removal permit extension, Pine Sand and Stone, 439 Northeast Main Street.
I don't see them here.
Good job, Les.
Is that, you go with the map, the way it looks? All right, I'll just...
Madam Chair, this was not advertised properly. I was here yesterday. It was not on the board outside of this, of Sleepy Hollow. It was not on the board. I really would like to protest this. I don't think that this should be talked about. I think it was advertised improperly because it was not on that board.
Um, it's under...
Yesterday as of noon time.
Okay, it's under discussion.
Yep.
But, um, they're...
It could have been a lot more people.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. Is there any objection to extending the time to...
I, I just want to see if it was in Maria's initial email.
What?
September 12.
Being after...
12 days ago.
The initial list was much smaller than this. It wasn't advertised typically, I think what Jeremy's saying is that this qualifies as a special permit, even though it's just an extension, and therefore needs to be advertised and butters need to be notified. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so, um, as the board knows, there have been instances when the board has granted extensions outside of a public hearing process for earth removal special permits. Um, this is one of the cases where they had this first, if you look at my email. Um, they did, they, they were granted one extension a year ago, and this would be the second extension that they're requesting. Um, number one in my email got taken care of. It, it looks like they did in fact record the decision after they received my email. So, they furnished copies of that. Um, but number two, we have not gotten any as-built plans for the site, and...
You asked for those, didn't you? Where do you ask for those?
I, I believe I asked for them last year, and I asked for them this year. And there's not been a heck of a lot of activity out there for earth removal over the past year. Um, and visually, it, it looks like they're pretty close to the grades that were approved.
Yep.
So, so I was, I was asking Jim for that plan to see where they're at so that we would know. I mean, why do they need an earth removal permit if, if, um, they, they are already at the grades that were designed?
Yep.
So...
Well, our next meeting is on the 8th, right?
The 10th.
Our, our next meeting is on the 8th.
Oh.
So, it expires on the 11th.
So, to that point regarding the hearing, typically if this were a formal hearing process, they would submit an application. They would submit application fees. We would run the advertisement. They would do the butter notification. We'd have the hearing. So, they did not submit an application. They submitted an email with the request.
For an extension.
For an extension.
Is, is, is there a notification of a butters with an extension?
Technically, are you asking technically?
Yes. It is for earth removal?
Technically, any special permit, yes.
Oh, so it's a, it's a re-notification of...
Yes.
The extension?
It's a new special permit.
It's not an extension then?
There's no method for extension.
You can get up to three extensions on a, on a special permit. It can be up to three years.
Correct, correct. So, so that's, so my point is, is if it's an extension, it, what would be the...
It rises to the threshold, and this is based on past conversations with town, town council. It rises to the threshold of a new permit, and therefore butters need to be notified and it needs to be advertised. That's the technical answer. And I'm happy to put the question to Jay for your benefit.
What causes the rise to require a hearing or whatever? The fact that this is the third extension?
No, any extension.
Is this for, well, special permit, you just request, like, if you're going to zoning board, special permit, you just request them writing to the board, and they're allowing. They allow six-month extension at a time.
Yeah, and that's why I'm confused with the re-notification.
So, it's a one-year plus a six, that's, that's mass general law.
I know, I know.
That you allow, that the board just, you request it from the board, they, and they decide if...
Well, let's ask Jay.
Yeah, it's great clarification between now and our next meeting, because the next meeting is on...
Because they have till the 11th. They have till the 11th.
Yeah.
And, and I'll share the response with the applicant.
Yeah.
So that they know if they need to re-advertise or notify.
But, the Oz built, oh.
Yeah, it's outstanding.
We want, it's been what, two, twice we've asked for it?
I believe we asked for it last time, I don't think the board required it.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I probably asked for it.
I, I'd like to see it, where it's been set in, it's been a couple of years. I, I'd like to see it set in so we don't run into a hassle again of where, what's this dirt, where's that dirt, what's going on here?
Yeah, there's, there's.
This time around, I, I think it should be, I think it should be done.
I think that's pretty much all done there.
Either whether it's pretty much done or not, it's been a couple of years.
Yep.
I think it'd be a good idea to have something on file.
Yep.
To know what it is right now.
Yeah, I think they can come back to us.
Now, will they have it before next meeting, I don't know. But if not, I wanna guarantee a date when we will have it. And if there's any way, if they don't do it, if we can do anything about it.
Can I say something to that when I get a chance, when I get a chance?
Do I need to address Tracy?
Freedom House, 48th and St.
Yep.
I was approached by Jim Pyne and he is going around to all the other butters to get letters to let him extend that, I believe. He's hoping he's getting these letters so that he can remove more gravel, he came to me and told me basically, he's putting a house on top of the hill unless I write a waiver letter letting him come closer, what did, what did he say?
Excavate within 10 feet.
Yeah, excavate within 10 feet of the boundary line.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, we're not gonna discuss this because as Jeremy brought up, that it's not advertised, so we're, we don't wanna discuss anything, especially the request the applicant is not here.
Correct.
So there's, there's no application, so there's no.
So the person that has requested the extension is not here.
Yeah, so they can come at one next meeting.
Jeremy said we shouldn't talk about it anyway.
Yep, so we're done.
So.
So, well, could that be, I, like I said, I'd like to request to have that.
I agree.
See what they say.
I will, if the board agrees, I'll resend the email and emphasize that the board asked for it.
I mean, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
We have no documentation.
I don't know why there wasn't an Oz built submitted before this time.
It's been asked for, but they just never did, I guess.
Okay.
So, alright.
Yeah, I'm just looking at a process for extension of special permits. Okay.
They have me at the next meeting, cause it's up on the 11th.
Bill, can I just clarify, does that have to be advertised, the telegramming, is that?
A local septic.
If it's a requirement, we're gonna look into it, Jeremy.
If it's a second permit?
If it's considered a separate permit, then it would be.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and just for the board's info, the only way I picked it up is I was here paying for a dog license yesterday, and I just happened to look at the, at the, the, the board. That's the only reason why I picked it up and I, I do check the email.
That's fine, we should, yeah. It was revised yesterday, maybe, I'm not sure when this agenda was revised.
Yeah. So, I mean, we get revisions all the time, it's printed and revised, so.
Yep.
We don't know what's going on. Dog permit too.
So, yeah.
Cool.
We'll move on that way.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Special permit versus extension. I just wasn't sure. I didn't know you had the re-advertise. Too strange. Yeah, it does. Cause I wouldn't consider it, I understand if it's a new permit, yeah, you gotta notify everybody with that.
We, we have this.
But an extension, it's already been approved.
We had this big discussion on accessory apartments.
Maybe it's, maybe it's related to earth removal.
No, it's the type of permit, is a special permit.
Yeah, right.
That's the only thing that it's related to.
So why would you trigger an extension? For an extension, you'd have to re-notify.
The permit was issued for one year. There's no provision in his decision that says you can seek, you know, an extension or anything like that.
Oh, so you guys took it as a new permit every time he extended?
Well, no, he requests the period of time.
He requests.
Okay, so when he files his application, he doesn't wanna post a surety for a three-year period, he wants to do it for a one-year period. So he only requested for a year, so the permit was issued for a year.
Okay, alright, it is, we'll find out what Jay says, you know, it's education.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Fun do to us.
Yep.
Uncovered ground.
Alright.
Cool, what else is up?
Okay, I'm gonna wanna skip to 7, Shady Knolls Estates, the bounds.
Mr. Bounds.
Mr. Bounds is here.
Mr. Bounds.
I'm bound, hopefully.
So, here, I'll give you one of mine.
I did know, I, Phil, I did notice in, um, last meeting that there was a bounds that was done up on Wildflower.
Yep.
And that, that bounds there was, um, was $800 from the engineering company.
Okay.
And I know you didn't do prevailing wages and stuff like that, so what did you?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be the difference, okay, so normally we'll go with a general contractor. The reason you're seeing a price difference from what I usually carry for surety is because this is specific through a land surveyor, which is considered a professional service.
No, this isn't bad. It's why you get the bounds.
Whereas if we had a subdivision project that we had to take over, we would likely hire a general contractor to oversee it, and therefore then we would pay prevailing wages on these things. So, um, I did go beyond what was originally asked and I provided a number of different scenarios. I drafted some warrant article language. And I submitted that pending the number, I left an open spot for the number for this Fall Town Meeting.
I'll make a request, if we can.
So if you look at the language down here, this is the warrant.
Where is the language?
Does she chop it off?
No, that's Goslin's email, it should be my email. Where is it?
Warrant ready, 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 ready.
First one, the first.
Yeah, that's it, with the blanks.
The blank, so it's just this section here, you would add it?
That's what I submitted to the selectmen for the town meeting warrant.
This would be the warrant.
Yeah, no, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Combine, you know what?
So I just need a number.
I'd combine Crescent and Downs, fish for this one. And then the next one, combine Manzy and Essex.
This is the same, the same subdivision, you know that, right?
Correct, but it's a starting point.
Okay.
To split them up, so it isn't that much, do half.
I know, but you know, this is the same area.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I think we have a better shot.
Yeah, I think that's.
Like 13,000, then we do 25,000.
Yeah.
And then maybe, if it goes well, then bring it up in the spring meeting, get the other half.
Right, okay, yeah, I'm for that.
What do you think?
So it's gonna be A and A.
Downs and Crescent?
Do, split it up, you know what I mean?
Well, well, can I suggest, instead of doing Crescent, you do Manzy because they're abutting, and, and that's, that's a significant distance for him to run a survey.
Man, you mean Manzy and Downs?
Manzy, Manzy and Downs, only, only, or maybe Manzy and Crescent.
Okay.
Manzy.
I don't know with that.
Okay, because those are abutting one another.
Alright, these two.
And they're closer.
But Downs is where we're, he's looking for a map.
I mean, that's pretty, Manzy's pretty close to his property.
Yeah, and at least we'll be heading the right way, right? It's a starting point.
You gotta start some.
Okay, so he's okay with it.
But, what I'm trying to do is. I have to wait till the spring for mine, but I mean, as long as.
Well, it's a starting point, you know what I mean?
The thing is, we don't wanna, you never wanna throw too much of a digit, where it can be broken up.
Yeah.
And this year I think it'll be broken up and done in two phases, real a bit more reasonable.
Yep, so this is, um.
Or you do part of the Downs Road and Manzy.
Well, that could be decided, that could be decided when it gets out there.
Well, no, we have it in front of us, broken down by road. So we need a digit as it is broken down.
No, no, the, the, the digit's still gonna be, you're gonna do 29 monuments, okay? At $350 per monument.
50 monuments?
No, quantity, quantity, that's the total number, okay, ready?
Yep.
So, 29, we are all on the same page, so you're gonna do 29 monuments.
What are you talking about?
All total, all them.
Correct, no, 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 but for the.
Adding some of the.
Manzy and Crescent. Manzy and Crescent, you add 22 plus 7, that gives you 29, okay? With the 350, so.
Okay, so where are you going now?
We're approving 29 monuments.
Yep.
Period, okay, yes, we would like these two here, but depending on when he's out there in the field, we still want 29 monuments.
Or you do all of Downs for 28?
Well, I, I think we're just gonna propose a 29 monuments and this dollar figure. Our goal is to get these two streets done, you know what I mean?
Well, Downs is the main street.
I understand, so when.
The total of 71 monuments are gonna be done.
Yep.
35.
Yeah.
There you go, break it up, 35 and 35, well, 35 and 36, well.
Okay, so then add in, so you got 29, add in six on Downs.
Correct.
So, but there's a fee, so let's, so you add 35 times.
What's 12, 12,000?
That's 12,200 bucks.
So I'll go with that.
25,000.
Can we do it that way?
So, why don't we do this?
Yep.
Yep.
We'll, we'll say Shady Knolls subdivision, Shady Knolls Estates, leave the roads out of it.
And say 35.
And budget, only budget based on a certain quantity of bounds.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so.
We're picking them.
Yeah, that's easier.
So if you wanna just do a half the number, or if you wanna do.
Yes.
It's 12,500.
That's why, that's why I said that.
So, I'll change Downs Road to Shady Knolls Estates subdivision.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
And then what we'll do is let it be known that there's 71 bounds that need to be done. We'd like to break it into two segments.
In the commentary, yeah.
Right, for the development.
Yep.
And break it down into two segments, and we're gonna request for 35.
Bounds.
Well, you say they put on each side of the streets, they're gonna be even numbers, right? So there's two.
They can be odd, I mean, there's some funkiness to some of this.
Okay, so 35 is it, so we're gonna request for half of them, which is 35.
Yeah.
Yep, which is, and then a dollar amount is 12.
And then, what I would do is probably, you know, try to get them to spread them out a little.
Yes.
Yep.
Throughout the project.
To stay within their.
So that, so that we're actually, if the goal is to help people locate their property lines, ideally, we, we may not have every monument installed, but we'll have half of them, we'll do the whole project, but only half of the monuments.
But it gives everybody then a starting point to go from, and it's equally spread out throughout the whole development.
Right, and that was the goal.
Right.
And that's what the whole intent is.
Yep.
Right.
I think that would be a better way of doing it.
I think it's great.
You got the number?
Proceed, yes.
So, I need a number, I need a dollar amount. So you, you wanna put 12,500?
You wanna say 12,500?
12,500, yeah, that's fine.
12,500.
12,500, and then we're doing that one, do you need anything else?
That'd be 36 of them.
Yes, vote, vote the article, read the article and vote it.
You'll have to have a neighborhood block party before the.
I was telling my neighbors today.
Everyone can come.
Thank you very much for sharing.
You're welcome, thank you. What? What's your question?
Where are the money from?
Yeah, so what was it? It comes from the general fund, but we, there's monies, there's monies that's allocated for the planning board, as well as monies that the planning board is generating.
What do I need to want from, in the, in the from, where do we take it from? Don't know yet.
Well, I leave that up to the powers that be.
Yeah. Yep.
From Concom.
Yes, from Concom. You wanna put that in there?
No.
Yep.
And.
See you later. Hey, uh, see you at the Fall Town Meeting.
Oh, I'll be there.
Bring the name.
Your cheerleader.
You know?
Um, multi-town rezoning.
12,500, did we see?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, we doing multi-town rezoning?
Uh, you wanted a motion, you wanted something done here, right?
Yep.
Oh, you need a motion?
In the, on here.
This is number seven?
Alright, so I'll make a motion for the select, so we want the selectmen to bring this forward. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 12,500 dollars from wherever the selectmen decide for highway bounds to be surveyed and installed in the Shady Knolls Estates subdivision. Throughout the Shady Knolls.
Both in the main?
Second. Second now?
Is this up for the fall?
Yes.
Yes, the fall.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, selectman's gonna sponsor this, cause they are the road people?
Well, you guys are putting it on the warrant.
He requested them to sponsor it.
We could certainly.
Because we don't have, we don't know.
The way, the way they usually, yeah, well, I understand that.
It's gonna come from us.
They'll tell us where the money comes from, and then we'll either pass or fail.
Yeah, they are the road commissioners though.
Sure, when's the, when's the time, when's the next meeting with them? Cause we'll also, or.
Well, then we should've gone there.
Gotta have to brief them. You could've gone to the road commissioners.
Okay, next multi-town rezoning.
Multi-town rezoning, um, in your packet you'll see correspondence from, I'm not sure. So, so we got, we got that packet from the Town of Oxbridge Planner. The goal is, if you look at the last page, there is a map that shows an area of town that's on the, for Douglas, it's on the opposite side of 146, so it's pretty much landlocked for Douglas.
You got this email? I, I got the packet.
Is that in your last?
Yeah, what, what packet?
What email do you got?
This whole thing, right here. What stash of documents are you looking at there? What are the things, where are the differences? Yeah, the, the, for example?
Here you go.
I think one.
Yep, there you go, Mike, right there.
This is, if I can ask, is this what the print was we saw a couple of years ago?
No.
The whole one out there?
No, not through pine.
Oh, this one?
This one's, this one's on the opposite side of 146.
Opposite side.
So.
So it's near Oakhurst and Lackey Dam Road.
So this, um, this zone is only going, or this bylaw is only for this specific area, right?
Well, that's one of the comments we have. So, so let me just give you a little intro and overview.
Alright, let's get rolling here.
All the area shaded back?
Go ahead, let's roll.
We're rolling. As I was saying, um, the town of Oxbridge Town Planner forwarded this document that they drafted internally in Oxbridge and their planning board supported. Asking both Sutton and Douglas to consider adopting this for our towns in the areas closest to the abutting communities. So, um, I know the map that's appended at the back of this honed in on one specific area, but there's nothing that references this cha-chart in the body of the document, so it's a little ambiguous as to the limitations. So, that area that's shaded is, um, Oxbridge on Lackey Dam Road. You'll see Douglas has a little wedge over in that area and then Sutton is, is the remainder. So, the theory is if you, if there were a proposed use at this location, this one parcel by one owner or a couple owners, it would facilitate common development and ease of development amongst the different communities, um, if we all had common zoning. In looking at what they're proposing versus our current allowable uses in our local bylaw, I've found that we're certainly more liberal and less restrictive with some of the things that they are prohibiting in this area.
Well, I'm just looking at this bill, that, you know, I mean, they're residential, they have residential A and residential B, residential C. They're all, you know, two thousand or a lot, or one acre, one acre. And then they get into their agricultural, which is two acres and then the business is fifteen.
Right, I think they're also seeking to rezone this in Oxbridge.
To what?
To either industrial or something similar to that.
Yeah, I was looking at it in the pack, but I was, I don't know.
So Oxbridge certainly, you know, has a lot here, but I think, um, what, what Mike Galarani had said was, um, the crux of this is in the purpose, which is in the first section, it says, "Development consisting of one or more lots developed as a cohesive project and designed with a blend of various compatible uses." And, um, I mean, the concept is good, I think. Our bylaw compared to Sutton and/or Oxbridge is more liberal, so we shouldn't have a problem.
Yeah.
So, so, at this point, you know, I, I think it would be prudent to just step back if we're serious about considering this. Perhaps we look at the Springtown Meeting and...
Or what?
I don't know where else this would be useful in the town of Douglas. I'd like to see all the rest of the locations where there would be.
Well, we have other parcels, yeah, we have industrial zone down on sixteen, um, on Oxbridge line.
One more user friendly though.
They do also.
One more user friendly than what these are.
Right.
So I think would be better off, maybe they should adapt what we have instead of them trying to ask us to take what they got.
Why would you say that?
So how would the, how would it be designated?
It's on their restrictions on what you can do.
For the areas.
That is what I'm getting at.
Where is the designation, like how, what?
The MTMC, I think that's what it's called, is not, I, I don't see a definition, I mean...
Established as a zoning district.
Yeah, it's a separate zoning district. You'll see it's a new column, it's much like the residential, Lakeside Residential we just talked about. It's got a new column in their bylaw. They're, they would suggest that we adopt an MTMC district and have it somewhere where we abut Sutton and, and Oxbridge.
So it would be, can be only used when a parcel in the development of said parcel involves parcels located in abutting towns and where said towns have adopted and applied the same or similar zoning language to the abutting parcels.
Alright, well, why would they wanna do this?
There's a benefit because...
Why?
So, so, just, just in general, the benefit is, is if Sutton owns a portion of this land, it's industrial as well, and, and Oxbridge owns a portion of it in this way, it would help any developer, the purpose of doing something with the land, that they're under one common zoning area for the whole tri-town.
Yeah, but if we're, if we're more relaxed and allow them to do a little bit more, they'll come to our town before they go to theirs.
No, 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 I, I think they still, when you, the, the, even in certain areas, when you cross into, you cross into Oxbridge and then you can cross back out into Douglas and your portion of your land is that way, I think they're just, I think the feedback should be, what we should do is, the feedback is...
Give them our board, give them our feedback.
Of the use, our feedback on, no, our feedback on...
How about that?
No, 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 I think the feedback on the use table of ones that were in question about. So I don't, you know, this is our first time seeing this, this new column.
So take it, take it, digest it. I, I don't see this happening for our Fall Town Meeting, so I would suggest that, you know, take it, review it. We'll, we'll talk about it again after you guys have a chance to look at it, compare to our zoning, see what you think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, this is the first time I'm seeing it, I'm just saying, like...
You know, like power plants, for example, um, if we were to get a power plant, um, it's allowable in our district, but it's not allowable in here.
This.
Right.
Well, yeah, I don't think we've done the comparison, right? Of, of, of our, our table line to their table line.
Right.
And I think once we do that, that's probably our next step to do.
And the other thing is, is a lot of this, right, let, let's say right here, right, what about ZBA, ZBA?
Multitown, multi-towns now.
Right there, what's that say? So why, why isn't it that?
Are you looking at the?
There.
You're looking at a different district, right?
Right, no, I, A and B, but that's who they have to go in front of.
Right.
Instead of that.
But that's a different district, we're looking only at this district here.
Only the one?
Only the one.
I thought you said you wanted us to adapt the whole thing.
No, no, just this column, just this column.
This is their use table.
We, we, and what we wanna do is be in the same boat with them.
Right.
So they're allowing a retail store and shop, okay? They're allowing a manufacturer setup.
Okay, so...
They're allowing a warehouse, I think, for the, the portion of land, alright, and they're allowing a bank, again, on the next page, they're allowing a bank agency, they're allowing professional offices, and a motel.
So what does the MTMC equal to in our town?
We don't have, we don't have a multi-town, this is where everybody would be in state.
That's what you wanna do.
Yeah, so I, I don't see a problem, again, this is my first look at it, with what the...
Like ours, we, we don't allow hotels, motels in our industrial.
Right.
Correct, but, but it's a multi-town.
It has to be touching the other towns.
Correct, correct, it has to touch the other towns.
And then you have a new map, because these are zoning districts, so you, we would have to change our map.
We would have to change our map.
Yeah.
Add the MTC.
We're charging our map anyways.
Yeah.
We would, with Lakeside Residential?
Well, that one we are, but not this one, this is a whole different, whole different avenue.
That would be a separate article too.
Yeah, a whole separate, this is a whole separate gig.
Yeah, has a, has a slot in this at all?
Before we even, before I would even remotely...
Would Matt be back on this?
Listen, before I would even remotely consider this, I'd wanna know where the areas would be.
They already just marked it up.
Uh, well, there's only one spot marked out right now.
Right now, but what other spots would it be covering?
I don't know.
It's one...
That's right, don't know.
Because we have all state forests on Webster Street.
So we only talking about...
We're only talking about Oxbridge and Sutton at this point.
Are we only talking about this one little spot?
That's it here, or we?
No.
That's it.
Wait a minute, how about West Street?
We would pick our locations, okay? So we would have to think about that and then define that.
And then at the other time they'd agree with, but you have to designate to adopt a, a zoning, a zoning area, right? You have to have a designated parcel that you're targeting.
Right.
So, the designated parcel that Oxbridge is coming forward is this piece of land.
Yeah.
Okay? Sounds like there's some interest with some type of development on their side as well as our side of, in this area. Can we live with what they're proposing of a motel or industry or something like that, I mean, that being in there?
Well, our, our parcel in our town is correctly zoned, right?
For that area?
Yeah.
Well, it's industrial.
Yeah.
Correctly, I don't, I don't...
Well, it, that's the least restrictive zone that we have.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming if our, if this MTMC that's been proposed corresponds with our industrial zone allowable uses, then it would be covered.
Let's say a hotel go, is proposed there, it wouldn't be allowed in Douglas, so, I mean, there is some value in looking at some...
But we can also change our bylaws and allow...
That wouldn't be a bad location for a hotel, you know?
But we can also change our thing to accept that.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily need to even adopt a different district, you just change our industrial zone.
To allow.
To all these things.
Right, like the other day we were down...
That's probably a bit better to do.
Like the other day we were down in Plymouth, alright, there's a Home Depot, we're behind Hilton. It's all an industrial retail type area, so you allow it in those spots. No big deal, you already car traffic.
Have you had an exchange?
That's easier to, I think I'd have to go with twelve.
I think that's a great idea.
There's, there is an email in your packet.
It has to have some zoning definition, so we either have to allow that in the...
Our industrial.
Industrial or...
That's why I was asking.
Commercial or something.
Change the uses.
Yeah, it'd be easy to change uses than it would be to go through this.
Yeah.
You know, that's all that we'd have to do.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, I get your point, if our, if, if we zone that quarter, you know, the, the corner of land and it meets, meets most of...
When I'm rezoning, just change usage, you don't have to rezone anything.
Change our use table.
As far as...
Allowable uses.
Then all it is is allowable uses.
And copy every single thing that they have in the MTMC.
Which might only be, might only be one or two that we don't have.
The hotels.
Then that'd be about it, then otherwise we meet it all.
Okay, that's fair.
That would be a lot easier than going through and doing all that.
That's fair, that's fair.
Yeah, I would agree.
That's fair.
I mean, I know...
And then if it's in town or out of town or next to this town, or, you know, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would wonder is, there's, there's always the state willing to, for the economic development, willing to pay for infrastructure and things like that when they're multi-town use.
It would be considered anyway.
Correct.
You don't even need a separate zone.
Yeah.
So what she's, what she's proposing here is...
In other words, they're trying to make us follow them, why don't we make them follow us?
Well, they had the idea first.
Yes, they did. We already got all of it, except for maybe the hotels.
So...
We're already allowing all.
Yeah, I think we, we could look into changing, or updating.
Usage.
Update our usage.
We have our table here.
So why don't we just take it, read through it, compare it, we'll put it on the next meeting, we'll talk about it.
Yep, fair enough, we'll be all night.
Is this in a document form?
A word form?
Yeah. Okay, did you file it to us?
Uh, might be a PDF, I'm not sure.
No, awesome, I mean, good information.
Yeah.
Good to use up some of them spots.
Yeah. So we get some changes there. What's the next bill?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Do you want your email back, by the way?
Um, solar regulations.
How'd you get it though?
Uh, I didn't have a chance to dig some up and put it in your packet, so I don't have it.
Uh, Douglas Renewables, one seventy West Street, driveway opening, Form G.
I think, uh, there's some issues with that document, so, um, I would say let's pass over that for now, it's not critical to them.
Zoning bylaw change index.
What's this one?
Okay, this one, um, you'll see in your packet, there is a, one page, index like so.
Yep.
And on the backside is an email from Town Council indicating that this, adding this would not require town meeting. So I've asked the town clerk if she would consider inserting this page into the current zoning book, I think there's value in it in finding the source of edits, when, every time the, the zoning bylaws are changed, it, it's good to know where the change...
Yeah.
Exactly, so if they, if you wanna track it down, this will help you.
Okay.
So I would, I would ask the board that they instruct me to send an email or memo on your behalf to the town clerk requesting that this be inserted.
I agree, so move to whatever you want, motion or...
Made, second. We're at number nine, we've skipped eight.
Was that a unanimous vote?
Yes, it was.
It's all yours.
Okay, number ten.
Um, request for fifty-three G funds returned, I'll accuse myself for the discussion, but...
Whoa.
I don't really know what that was.
Now, the numbers I don't think are correct in the letter, um, is it short? I have in the G account, which is the money that they're entitled to.
Yep, by project, right?
Yep. It's nine seventy ninety-seven.
Yep, that's what they've got in the letter.
Okay, but I'm not sure what the two fifty-five plus interest is.
That's what I was told.
Might, might just check what accounting, I don't know if it was another thing.
I, that's what was related to us as what was left over. So I would just move that, that's disregarded.
Yeah.
The project's been done for a while?
Sounds like there's two lots there, right?
Yeah, and I think one of them was sold.
Breaking up the cost for each lot.
Well, it's, it's not even, it's, it's a private way or whatever, private drive. It's not a paved road or anything like that, so, um, it's a subdivision that was just two massive lots that are ten acre plus, so I don't have a problem releasing it.
We're looking for a motion to release the nine seventy ninety-seven?
Is the, can you look in the to be signed folder, I did ask for it to be in there?
Is there an exact number, or from?
Nope.
Not surprising.
So would you wanna just call for the, for the project?
So I would ask for two things, authorize the chairman to sign the document. So I need a vote for that.
Yep.
And then vote to refund the funds.
I'll, I'll make a motion for, uh, the planning board chairman to sign the release of the funds for Louis Way, Catherine Way.
Louis subdivision, Catherine Way.
I'm just reading what was there, Louis Way subdivision, uh, and Catherine Way. And to release the funds for that project.
Well, we're gonna give a total, or total's unknown, total nine seventy ninety-seven?
Yep.
And any interest that may have occurred.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ray Hughes. Leonard Engineering Monitoring Observation Contract Summerlin Estates.
This is for Summerlin Estates, things happened between meetings, so, um, I did work with the developer and he was okay with utilizing Leonard as an outside service, uh, for the project. So I did ask Matt to sign, this work did occur today, I'm looking for a retroactive vote from the board authorizing this work.
Which one was this?
This is off Cross Street, Wildflower Drive.
Okay, Wildflower Drive.
Today they paid...
It confuses, it confuses me when, when the subdivision's one name and the road's another.
I understand.
I'm just being fair on that, I mean, so, okay, it's Cross Street.
So move for what's been requested?
Motion's been made.
Second.
A retroactive...
Retroactive.
Love Lamar Engineering.
Yeah.
Accept the contract and authorization, and it was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
And up in site remediation, this was the other one?
I asked Gene to provide an update for the board, um, only because we were pursuing, uh, accessing the surety. I've been pushing him to provide an ASBIL plan and a restoration plan so that the board can review it and approve it. He's planning on, uh, shallowing out the slopes, restoring some of the site. I know he's planning on perhaps bringing in some crushed glass, which is, uh, which is a beneficial use determination material from the DEP. So, again, it's allowable from the DEP's perspective, um, so, but this is just an update, it's not his formal proposal. We're waiting for the formal.
What happened with the...
This is the DEP considers.
What happened with the court proceedings for this project?
What happened with what?
The court proceedings.
They internally had a court case.
Yes.
And there were two partners, Kip Foley and Gene Burnett had a dispute, they went to court. We were having issues with Kip. Early on, Gene was involved, we had no issues, got the thing permitted and approved.
Right.
And then Kip was the guy I was dealing with during the operations, and Kip was the one that was refusing to restore the site.
Yep.
Based on promises Gene made.
Right, yep.
And then, uh, they had a dispute, the court ruled that Gene has control of, I forget the name of the company.
X Y Z.
Yeah. So Kip's out of the picture, Gene's now proceeding with the restoration, restoring the site.
It's the one that they usually...
So that got dropped.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Okay, that was my question.
This is the site where they were bringing in the liquid fill, correct?
Yes. Something way back in the day, yes.
I don't know what we're talking about, yeah, okay. Awesome.
ZBA application, I don't see anything. We already did this one?
Did, that was done last meeting?
Was it?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, the name was in here?
It sounds familiar. It sounds familiar.
We did Wallace Street.
Are we all crazy?
No, no, we did, we did, uh, we did, uh, we rode.
Oh, I remember, it was on Concom, that's where it was at.
But I don't know if we could...
It was at Conservation.
I don't think we get this one.
No.
There was two last meeting, but I don't think this was one, yeah.
Yeah, so I have nothing in the folder for that.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, he did go to Conservation, that's what that was.
Can you give us a high level of, I mean, we can't sign the thing, but...
Um, it was just reconstruction, not, um, increasing any non-conformities, existing non-conformities. Ten inch building, right exactly on the same footprint.
Same footprint?
Same footprint.
With a garage across the street.
I had no form.
Alright.
We can just, what?
Oh, that's down, uh, Peters Cove.
Yeah, no, no.
That's the one where they combined the two lots, they wanted that first septic across the street.
No.
No, no, you're in the wrong neighborhood.
No, there's something is across the street and a garage.
Right, it is.
You're in the wrong neighborhood.
But it's same but different, same but different.
Yeah, I used to live on South of West Main, it's not Peters Cove.
Northwest.
Northwest Main. I live on two ninety-four.
This one in Northwest Main, it's nowhere near...
It's not actually there.
So she gave you the address?
We're not gonna give any response, cause we don't have any paperwork.
But that's the one in Peters Cove, yes.
Peters Cove.
You're right.
I know that.
Great.
Okay, and meeting minutes, do you wanna do one?
I haven't left it that long, I don't know where that is.
ZBA or that.
We already did these two, we approved them as amended last week.
Okay.
At last meeting.
We all good? Alright.
Uh, we have a couple things to sign.
Your boy.
Alright.
All set? What do we gotta sign?
Any other things, Bill, any discussion?
Things are moving along on Gilbo Court Extension, um, they're in the process of trying to rule out the need for an underdrain by doing test pits, they're having difficulty getting their engineer out to the site, um, so it's kinda delayed things for a few weeks. The, uh, Williams Drive, I'm amazed the amount of heavy equipment they have on that site, um, and all the stockpiled material for such a small project, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, but, um, so that's moving along too, which is good. Evergreen Estates, I've been talking to a local developer about perhaps picking up that project and looking at senior housing for that site.
Wow.
Evergreen's off a sub-street?
Yeah.
Just there we go. On, uh, the solar parky town, West Street, did they ever put any signage up?
Right now, they've only been approved through this board to cross the, the brook and then stop.
The driveway, the driveway permit.
Were they supposed to put up some signage on West Street?
No parking, no parking.
No parking.
They still haven't done it. I'll send an email tomorrow.
Not that I, I mean, I've drove by it four times, I don't think I've seen anything there.
That's cause they're asking for us to issue permits.
Well, did they get their driveway permit? Cause that was...
They got the driveway opening permit, they posted ten thousand dollars, we're still going back and forth with the surety that was in your packet tonight, and there's some problems I saw with it, so we're going back and forth on it.
That was another condition, was that the signs would be put up before they got that driveway opening permit. that driveway opening permit.
Yes, and there's supposed to be a snow fence on the property line to make sure that these things got conveniently forgotten. See, this is what happens on the large solar projects, so everyone realizes, the permitting crew that comes in and that we have all this great dialogue with and great conversation and they promise the world, they're gone to the next town to permit and schmooze, and now we have the construction superintendent that's saying, "I don't know what you're talking about."
Well, guess what, better read the packs.
Well, it's on the plan, and we stress that it's supposed to be on the plan, and it says, "In our minutes, they have not installed the snow fence, installation of no parking sign, Bill has spoken to the developer about these items, Mr. Mark suggests that completion of these items be a condition for obtaining a driveway permit." I don't know how the conditions are not being met without the release, if it's coordinated between everyone in town. I just don't understand how things are released.
How, what's released?
The driveway permit, they got a driveway permit.
That's Highway Department.
Right.
The planning board chairman.
I'm just telling you, how can we impose a condition on the Highway Department?
I would appreciate though if the Highway Department would concur, maybe what the town engineer, say, "Hey, before I cut this permit, is there anything I should know about